Nelson?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll move to our quest update superintendent.
Yes, um, I don't know if you've had an opportunity, even on the front of our webpage, there's a, a link to the Heritage Language Conference. You know, we are in our twenty-seventh year of offering our language conference, even just this weekend, I was up at superintendent's meeting, and I had Superintendent Bates from Granite say, "Did I miss your conference? I've always enjoyed coming down to your conference, are you still doing that?" And I was able to report that we are. But this year with COVID, um, there were some great challenges in how to have a conference and how to make it meaningful. And I know, um, there was a lot of talk and a lot of work that went into this, but Brenda Whitehorse and her department, Trevor Olson and, and working with him and his resources, um, and heritage language teachers throughout the, the district and others who have contributed. But I was literally taken back with how awesome the conference turned out this year. They had some tremendous presenters, they had some students that were just great examples of our district and what's happening. And it, it was well done, well filmed, and I just wanna pay tribute to, you know, when we look at our quest model, we have heritage language and culture, and in that area, with a highlight in that area with our conference, I think is very fitting, it was just a, oh, job well done. And like I said, if you haven't had a chance, definitely take a few moments, it's, it's, I think the whole thing is, is just over an hour. But it would be worth your time to sit down and just enjoy that, very meaningful.
Okay.
Good to know.
Thank you. Alright, school land trust program, is that just you Julie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Christie is online, uh, but we figured, it's, it's hard when one person's virtual and one person's a person.
Oh, okay. Sure.
And so I told her, I'll go ahead and then she can fill any questions, but, um...
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do you mind if I just pull up here?
It's a table, don't you?
Yeah, will that work?
We need a little table.
It's okay, we'll do school like this. We need my stash of stuff. Okay, so this year, um, for our school land trust discussion and training, um, I, on this document, um, the website is there, but just know that they do maintenance on occasion, so it's down right now, of course, because we chose to train in December, it's down. So, um, but there's your links to those, so the only thing you really can't see right now on the website are the plans, the school plans. You can access all the training materials and all the links that I've put on here for you, all of that's still available. Um, a couple of things that I want to just mention, um, and then open it up for any questions that you, that you might have. But our state is really excited that this year with the trust lands, I mean, they've exceeded eighty-eight million dollars of money that schools are getting statewide. And our, our district, um, total allocation was five hundred and fifty, a hundred and twenty-seven. So it's pretty significant funding, pretty valuable funding for our schools, and I know we say that every year, but it just becomes more and more valuable as we put it into plans that really are meaningful and that we can really see a difference. And I, I visited with the, um, state land trust office a couple of days ago, just about a couple of things, and they just said how exciting it is that, that San Juan is really, they just watch what's happening with school land trust money in San Juan School District. So, I think that's a really, um, exciting thing for us to know. Um, I do have at any time, if you're ever interested, the breakdowns of what every school, like, I didn't put all of this on there, but just know that at any point, if you're interested, I have the breakdowns. We've also put, um, we've also put every school on a budget sheet, so we have a visual and we have a monthly, um, monthly what's coming in and going out, and what those goals are allocated for by school, so you can, and this is really helping us to do better tracking and support the principals in their tracking and in their programs. Um, it's just, it, it's what should have been happening and we've just, um, we've just pulled it together. So, really excited about, um, about knowing exactly where we're at and being able to track that carefully, and just know that that's available. If any of you ever want to see that, we have access to that. A couple of important documents that I do wanna refer to here, the one that says program and council changes, will you just click on that one, Matt? This is really the updates, um, the legislature does spend quite a bit of time in school land trust each year, and depending on the feedback that they've had that year, um, you know, depends on what's, what the discussion is, um, about that. So, a couple of things that they just want us to remember, and that is that our first consideration when, when the schools are working on their plans are really those core areas. So, science, math, and, um, ELA, and then also college and career readiness, those can be a part of their plans, as well as grad, the graduation, anything that has to do with graduate rate, graduation rate increases. So, um, you know, we built into a couple of our plans this last year, some counseling support, and that's where, that's where that would fit. Then we can also consider as a board, um, things like financial literacy, fine arts, health, the ed tech department, library, media, physical education, social studies, and rural languages. So all of those content areas can also be considered. But as, um, a board, they want you to know that, I mean, really, um, schools should be basing their plans around those core areas, and then if we're doing well in all of those core areas, then we could, should be looking at some of these supplemental areas. So, that was one of the discussions. Um, one thing that we've talked about in the past is this behavioral component that can be a part of the plan, needs to be academically related or connected to an academic goal, and there used to be a limit, like five thousand, seven thousand, that they could spend. There is no limit, as long as that behavior goal now is connected to, um, a content area, an academic area. So, there is a limit when, um, there is a limit and it's seven thousand dollars, they cannot exceed seven thousand dollars when they are doing digital liter, using it for digital literacy training or safety training for safety, um, plans in their school. So that's something to just be aware of as well. Um, and also, um, one thing that they have built in is there is an annual, what's called a final report that you'll see in, in each one of the school plans. That is being reviewed and now by, at the district level before it's reviewed at the state level. So you can just rest assured that we're looking at that before the state's looking at that, and that's part of the new legislation. Um, and then there are, there are three kind of crazy new council advisory roles that were added in the legislature. Um, most of them really don't, um, well, two of the three, won't really, we won't probably see a lot of discussion in our area, but it came from other schools, um, in the northern part of the state. But the councils can advise, based on the new legislation, on, um, positive behavior plans in the school specifically related to some of these safe school areas, like tobacco, alcohol, electronics, and those kinds of things. And that came from discussion at legislation where a lot of students were vaping, a lot of vape pens showing up at school, and so they said, "We want them to be able to write that in the plan, can we have discussions about that?" So that's where that came from. So the council can advise in those safe schools areas and action plans, councils can work on those action plans together. And really, that would be a part of our, our safety piece of our council's roles. I mean, we're tasked as a council to look at those safety pieces, whether it's, um, social, you know, socially emotional or mental kinds of things, or whether it's school safety and facility kinds of issues, and so that would fit right in with that very easily. Um, school breakfast, so it says that the councils may, if they choose to advise the local board to opt out of the program. In our area, we are federally funded through Title I, um, for that program, so, I mean, I don't see that we would have parents wanting to do that. But that is something they could discuss if they wanted to and advise on. And then in high schools, if they wanted to, they could discuss and advise local boards about the possible benefits and consequence of a later start to the date. And that came from some of the schools, um, in the Salt Lake area that wanted to start at nine o'clock, and, but it always boils down to, um, transportation. So they haven't made any discussion, but it's something that they want the boards to be able, or councils to be able to advise on. Those are really the changes for this year. So, as far as how the plan runs, how the councils run, all of that is still the same. Um, I do want to just draw your attention to, um, back on that sheet that has all of the links, Matt. This, this page is there, and just as a reminder, this just really shows our cycle of what we're, um, working with the schools, the cycle they're going through, um, just at the bottom, just sort of the bottom of that. Um, in their councils as they begin developing their plans, and in January, I mean, they're, they've looked at their fall data, and most of it obviously is formative data, we don't have our end of year data to look at this year. But, um, they're using their formative data and observational data at their school levels to identify their needs, and then they're constantly discussing ideas for their plans, how they will want to implement that, what their action steps will be, and then monitoring, assessing, right now they're monitoring and implementing this year's plan while they're gonna be, start thinking about next year's plan. And then we analyze, so that's the cycle that they're going through, and so, um, I just want you to be aware that that's, that's where we're basing our, our work from. Um, a couple of deadlines, just to be aware of, and the board really, um, approves these, um, deadlines for us. Um, so the state, the state sets the October twentieth deadline, that's when all of the website things have to be up. So you can check any of the school websites for any of their, you know, who's on their community council, their contact information, their updated agendas, their minutes, all of those things, rules of order are all on there by October twentieth. And then, um, we would like to propose that we keep April first as our plan due date, if that's okay with you. Um, and that would give us time between then and April fourteenth to get those ready for you to present, uh, to you on the fourteenth. The state wants those by the fifteenth of May, and so that gives us an opportunity that if you have some ideas or thoughts or concerns with any of the plans, we can take it back to school and possibly bring it back to May's board meeting before they have to be, go back to the state. So, you think that will be okay? Alright, all of our schools are continuing with a fall election process, um, all of those are manual right now. If we decide, or the board decides that you want us to look an electronic platform, we can, it just has to be secure and available for everyone in our area. So, um, right now we just do it locally at the schools, paper pencil ballots, so that's how that's working. Um, there is a, there is, um, right there under appropriate expenditures, I'm not going to go over that sheet, but I just want you to have access to it as you're looking at the plans, um, so that you can see what really is appropriate. They do all have to be tied to an academic goal, and anything that's related to administrative costs or facilities, those kinds of things cannot be, um, cannot, the money cannot be spent on that, really needs to go directly to students and student achievement. Um, the piece for incentives for students still stays at two dollars. So we can't exceed two dollars for any of our, two dollars per student for any incentives. Um, let's see. And I think, there is a, one of I think the most helpful sheets, um, for the board is this one that is approval guidelines. Um, yeah, it's the purple one right there. So, and as we get closer, if, you know, this is just a really good guide for the board to have, um, questions to ask as you go through and look at each one of the plans. You know, are they following academic priorities, are they student focused, does their, do their action steps and their budget align with their goals? And, um, and then if there are any behavioral intervention pieces, and, and you, you'll see those built in, um, mostly, I mean, they could be resources, um, like some kind of a social emotional program or something, but it would have to be t- directly connected to some academic area as well. We have seen, um, those, um, being tied to, um, like a paraprofessional in the classroom, that's, their focus is behavior in a math classroom, if you had, you know, there's a significant need for that, so that's where you might see that behavioral component come in.
So Julie, does, does the behavioral have to be tied to a core, or?
Just an academic.
Just academic?
Because, because if the board decides, you know, if there is a school that's really excelling and they go out to go beyond into, you know, one of those other areas, then the board can decide that, you know, that's okay, and they could still connect a behavioral goal to the academic area.
Okay. Okay.
And the, the digital, um, our content filtering document, that is, do you have that one there too? So this is the one that we review each year, and we also give this out to the community count, the, each council to review and give us feedback. Um, Erin did all of the legwork on this, um, putting this together, it's really what filters we use in the district to help students stay safe. And that has become over the years, um, a part of the council is, the, yeah, uh, yes, the very bottom one, very bottom one. Um, that has become a task of the council over the years to review that, and it's been really good conversation to have with parents. And we just want feedback from the board too as well, you know, Erin is consistently asking us, um, you, you know, how's it working at your schools? He's watching those iBo, you know, the, um, the searches that students are looking at, and, and iBoss will catch the majority of the things, but, um, we occasionally have something come up where we need to look at tightening that filter or whatever. But, um, Erin is in contact with us and the schools, and we, we're working on that all of the time, just to make sure that filter's where we want it to be, and getting input from the teachers as well. So, um, just, you know, when you have a chance, read over that, if you have any input for us on that, feel free to let us know, and then we can make changes or whatever to that. We also, that really works hand in hand with our, um, our student technology form that parents fill out at the beginning of the year. They have to sign that form, that their students are gonna use it responsibly, and so that, those two, um, documents work hand in hand.
Does the parent just sign that form, does the student sign it as well?
Yes, there's a student signature place and a parent, mhm. And I think there's a teacher too, isn't there?
To, to monitor.
I think it is.
I'd say they're all.
Uh, like an advisor or somebody that, uh, signs it?
Yeah, I think there's, I'd have to double check that on the teacher part, but the student and parent will sign that, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, any school land trust questions or concerns?
Okay. Questions? Questions, if still are, Nelson? Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
No questions.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks.
Thanks Julie.
Thank you.
Alright, go to the COVID reentry that we visit every month.
Yeah, we visit this every month, I think, you know, this is important, it, it's an ongoing, um, plan, it's, 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 um, has the ability to be revised and changed, and, and I think as we look at our data and we see things that are concurrent and, and pertinent to what we're facing, and, you know, that provides an opportunity for discussion, so I think it's really healthy. I wanted to start with what we are seeing, um, presently, and you may be very familiar with the numbers in the county, and maybe you're not, I don't know, but they are attached there. If you, um, were to pull up the, the one that says twelve eight dot twenty twenty, right there, um, you'll see the very latest in the testing numbers as of, um, yesterday. Uh, and so we do have two hundred and twenty-seven active COVID cases that have been documented in San Juan County. You can see the location, uh, I watch this either once, they update these either once or twice a week. And so it's been very interesting to see kind of the ebb and flow back and forth, the rise and the drop of these numbers. This represents a very high number in the county. Uh, last week, last Friday, there was actually two hundred and thirty-three, so we did come down five from, six from last Friday, but that's one of the higher numbers, two thirty-three, that I remember seeing even back into the summer, back into the spring. Um, and so you also will see that where kind of the hotspots are, and again, we've, we can identify that Montezuma Creek. Um, those aren't lining up, are they, for me, or, they're kind of off, aren't they? So you gotta put the numbers up one, I'm sorry, by showing it up there, it's pulled them down. But Blanding is at fifty-one, you just need to move them up one, Bluffs at twelve, LaSalle is mi, is less than five. If they're less than ten, or less than five, they'll just put five and ten, I think it's, it starts to identify people in certain communities, so they're, they're very careful of that. Uh, Montezuma Creek has ninety-four cases, Monticello has thirteen, and Monument Valley has fifty-three. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, um, presently in the county as to what we're seeing and what's out there. Um, I think it was four weeks ago, Monticello had fifty-seven, so they have come down a long ways from fifty-seven down to thirteen, I watched that drop. So there is a, kind of a back and forth to these numbers if you watch them on a weekly basis. But, um, you know, we've, uh, we've tried to modify some things in the last month that I just wanna maybe speak to and, and maybe, uh, get an update on. In both regions, in the mountain region, if you remember, um, not this last month, but two months ago, we eliminated the option two for students in Blanding and Monticello who were attending those schools, and, and provided only option one and option three. And I think Julie's the best one to speak to that when that time comes. Um, and then in the river region, just in the last, um, three weeks, because of the most recent, um, health order from the Navajo Nation, we were already church teaching virtually, but we were, we're still bringing kids to the front of our buildings. We had tents out in front, we were bringing them through on a, on a regular scheduled basis for a check-in type, um, experience, where they check in on their academic progress, and we were having teachers at the building. And when this latest health order came in and asked for a stay-at-home order, we stopped all that and moved back into our homes. So right now in the river region, all parents are teaching, excuse me, all teachers are teaching from their homes, and all students are learning from their homes. There might be a little bit of special ed where there's some very, um, um, high needs for some severe students, but other than that, all students are learning at home, all teachers are teaching from home, and we're still, you know, so we, when you look at those numbers, I feel that was a really wise move to, to try to curb what was coming and still what we've seen. I don't know, it couldn't even possibly be worse without those types of measures being taken. Um, again, I think Christie's the best one to speak, in both of these cases, we always wonder educationally, what, what is, what are the consequences educationally, what are, what are the teachers seeing? And, and I'll let them speak to that, but that's kind of where we're at there. Um, we are also presently, due to the latest, um, health order from the state of Utah, in order to play in extracurricular activities, we have started our student testing of all extracurricular activity participants are now being tested. Um, that was a very, um, complex s- thing to get set up and get going, we're still actually working through some of that. But what was involved there is we had to apply to become, uh, an official testing site. To do that, we had to make an agreement with the Utah State Department of Health, and what, when you do that, you enter in what they call a CLIA waiver, and you sign a document that allows you to become a temporary testing unit, and they give you the instructions and the regulations that you must follow. And so we are working very diligently to be in compliance with that. And we've started round one, we tested, um, short of two hundred students, pretty close to two hundred, just under that. We did not have one positive student in the first round of testing, so we can report that. Um, but I do wanna make the board, you're probably aware, I would be surprised if it hasn't gotten a little to you, there's certainly been some parental concern, and it, and I have tried to, um, answer questions or provide information as best as I can where, where those that reached out, you do in your executive session, and I left it in executive because I think it's a private letter that I don't have permission to make public, but I wanted you to see the type of correspondence and the type of answers that are being given. So in your executive session, you do see some of that correspondence back and forth from me to others. The concern has been, there's been a couple of major concerns that have been expressed to me. One is that the, they, they were very concerned that the data should not go beyond the school. It should not go up to the state level, and where it goes from there, you know, I couldn't answer that completely, but, um, and, uh, then there's always some concerns about mask still, where it was a concern that's gotten a little bit to me and still being addressed is the wearing, the requirement of masks. Um, so those are kind of some of the really hot issues that I'm, that I've filled it in the last few days, and you may have as well. Um, uh, my answer to the, oh, I guess the other one was the actual form letter that was used, and that it didn't seem, that it, there were some concerns about what all it covered, and you have a copy of that form le- letter on there as well. And to those concerns, I, I can just say this, um, when we sign a CLIA, CLIA waiver, we are required, I have looked into this and explicitly gotten instructions, that that data has to go into a program that they call the REDCAPS. Well, we can use one of two programs, but the REDCAPS is the one that we are choosing to use that, that is the most supported for us. But it, either way, the data has to go to the state health department. We do not have a choice of not passing that data on. They're looking at data across the state, I don't, you know, the answers I get is they're not interested in any one student's, they're looking at it as, as an aggregate, a, a complete picture of what they're seeing across the state. But there are parents that feel very concerned still, that individually their data is, is moving past here. As for the form letter, um, that is a letter that the state provided as a resource, knowing that there were many superintendents and districts that were not completely comfortable with all of the safeguards and requirements involved in something like a medical testing clinic. There, there are some, some things that have to be correctly worded and signed, and, and parents have to be involved. So the state did produce that letter, we were able to utilize it and place our logo on it, and what that letter states is actually the facts of what's happening. It clearly states that we are making an agreement with the state Utah Health Department to enter into a CLIA waiver, and then it talks about, um, the aspects of that and, and why, where the data will be used, and, and certainly the parents, gives them the option of whether they'd like to sign that letter and authorize that, that their child be tested or not. Um, so that's kind of where it stands at this moment. If you had questions about, academic questions about either region, I know Julie's here, I believe Christie's on the phone, I'd ask them if there's any other questions that I can answer, but, you know, at this time, I feel like we're probably in the best place we can be. We're still, like I said, getting our official CLIA, we're, we're still getting the REDCAPS program completely all the, set up on that and worked through the, the issues with that. But we have gotten up and going, our kids are participating because we've been able to provide what's been required. There is anticipation that these, our students will be tested, those that participate in activities will be tested in a two-week window from now to the foreseeable future if they choose to participate there. There's no date being used, is we're going till this point or what? They've actually thrown out a two-week window that went all the way through the school year, so if one wants to, I guess they could assume that means that this may be in place to the end of the year. And, but things change so quickly, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't try to say that, you know, it seems like every month there's new changes in what we've, and that's why we need to talk about it monthly, is every month it's a little different scenario. But I think that would bring you up with what we're seeing and what we're, we're dealing with right now, and, and I'll, I'll just fill any questions if you have them.
Okay, I have a question. So the health order from the governor, in the actual health order, doesn't imprint there, there are not all the detail that now we're s- hearing that the state is requiring us to do. So are there things that we're being required to do that's just passed down by word of mouth and it's not actually in writing anywhere and as a district? If, if that's the case, I think we need to go back up the line here and say, where, where, where is this imprint? Who's authorizing this, who's, um, for, for things that we have to do? I, I think we need a paper trail. So if it's coming down from a source higher than us and we don't have any control over it, we need to be able to produce those documents that say, here it is, it's imprint, and we don't have, we, we're just doing what we have to do to hold school and to hold that extracurricular activities. If it's just, somebody said this and somebody said that, so now we're doing it, I think we're liable for going along with a lot of things that don't have any substance, or may not have substance, or may not have the authority to require some of the things we're doing. You know, with HIPAA being so, HIPAA is a, a big deal, and everybody knows that you can't share health records about anybody for anything. I couldn't even pay, um, my daughter, when she was, she had turn eighteen, her first year at college, they wouldn't send me her bill, and I just wanted to get it paid, they let me pay it, but they wouldn't send me her information. She was back on the east coast, you know, the whole nine yards because of HIPAA. And, um, and now, I do feel like they are twisting people's arms to give permission because it's still not legal to share informa, medical information about people. And so it feels like a twist, you know, but we'll twist your arm if your kid really wants to do this, then you have to agree to give permission, not...
No, no, the parent, the parent does sign that they agree that that data will go into that.
That will be shared, so, you know, there's, there's some.
Shared it, not, not publicly shared, but yes, it will go into REDCAPS.
Well, they're, they're sharing that, and what kind of safeguards are in place for where that's going after it's shared? Um, I, I think we need a paper trail ourselves to be.
I don't know how it looks once you take the data out of REDCAPS, we're still learning even how to get the data into REDCAPS.
So the way we submit the data is a name and a positive or negative?
Yes, the parent registers a child, they use a name, they put an email that they'd like the testing results to be sent to, they get to choose where that goes, and they sign, they, they do register their child in there, they do it only once, once the child is in there.
Is there a date of birth, is there, I mean, how explicit is the data?
I believe it has all of that.
A lot of information.
But I mean, but I have not registered someone, and we're still working through that process to, to actually see that. We, we did not use REDCAPS on our first go-around, we, Julie has a meeting even tomorrow to get set up on that. We, the, the system crashed statewide because all of a sudden the entire state was trying to use it, so we manually had to keep those red. So we manually had to keep those records, and we will import them into REDCAPS on this second go-around, with the second go-around, they'll both be in there together, but.
But did, do you talk high school athletic association, where did they get their mandate?
Okay, so, so what, what happens there in, is, the, the governor has a task force, and the task force has everyone on it from, we see Angela Dunn on her updates, we, they have some federal officials that are representing FEMA and other, I don't know, other federal positions that are on there. They have state agencies, they have all your health department representatives on there. And that is who's making decisions, and they are getting input. I would say it's, certainly the superintendent's association has been asked on a number of issues of what is our recommendation. One example of that is when this IDIF first came out, the committee's recommendation was weekly testing. Superintendent's Association said, we really would like you to consider bi-weekly testing. We just don't think we can keep up with weekly, and they listened. And so they, when it came back out, it was every fourteen days rather than every seven. So this process is playing out with the so-called most educated, most relevant people to be discussing this at the governor's disposal, that he puts together in a committee. Then when they come out with their health department order, which if you'll notice was not, the governor didn't sign that health order, it was signed, it was signed by the health department top official who signed that. That doesn't necessarily, that says what's gonna happen, what's expected. It doesn't, and I, I would imagine the health order would have to be a, a book if they went beyond that, but it doesn't say, okay, how are you gonna do this? When it says all students will be tested every fourteen days, the immediate reaction for me and others is, how's that gonna happen, you know, how are we doing this? We have not been in the medical testing field ever before. So all of a sudden, the how, well, when we, we started, they, they, they did organize regular superintendent's conference calls, knowing that they would, there, there would be tremendous push. This was, had to be up and going in two weeks' time, when it came out and when we actually had it going. So they, they, they scheduled these conference calls, they assigned a gentleman from a federal agency named William Lanier, who would walk us through exactly what it meant to say we will test all students. And they outlined the steps of what would have to happen to legally follow all legal regulations involving HIPAA, involving the medical side of things, the clinical side of things, to become a CLIA waiver. And we have walked through those steps. And like I said, there's breakdown in a couple areas, REDCAPS over, it, it, it crashed, and we're still working through that. But for the most part, we've been able to walk through those steps and be approved. We have a CLIA waiver in place, it's good for all of our schools in the district. So should our River Region schools come back on and have extracurricular activities in January, we are approved to even have a testing site in those schools. And we've trained, we had to train our testing teams, we've trained those, we've walked through all the steps. We had to sign an agreement, we had to, there's a number of things we had to do there. But those aren't included in the actual health order, I don't think it could be. It would become, it would become so cumbersome, but, but that's where we're at, and that's, that's what we followed in. We're no different than any other district that's doing the same, but.
We're just jumping through hoops that, and, and I understand why, you know, because everything's changing so often, and we're being told, you know, on the news every night, there's all the, the numbers and those kinds of things. And we're just trying to keep the kids in school and allow them to have some kind of a normal life and play their, you know, be involved in their activities, and I get that. But I think we've gone along with a lot of other school districts and just jumped through the hoops without asking enough questions. And I think we need to see all this in writing that comes from the governor, that, I think we, I think we need to challenge it.
Okay, but my question is, is, I don't, I mean, obviously that wasn't the district's idea to come up with the testing.
Right.
So I mean, and I, I feel like what you did though is you traced that back to where it's coming from. Do you not feel like that's being traced back through?
No, not all the mandates, not the specific mandates. You know, the person who wrote that form letter doesn't have the, the authority to tell us what our parents have to agree to to allow their children to participate.
That letter just didn't, I guess what I'm saying, I'm saying is, is, I don't think that this got passed down, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm kinda disagreeing with the fact that this didn't just come, someone sat at their desk one day and said, here, we're gonna send all these letters to the district. It comes down through channels, and I don't disagree with trying to go back and find out exactly how. But it's not someone that's just conjuring up an idea and saying, hey, let's make this happen.
Because you've got a chain of where it's coming from.
Everything that I have learned through this pandemic process was the health department literally has the highest authority right now involving all of this issue. They could shut our schools down, yeah, you know, if we, if we are required to go virtual, they could make that call at any point.
Well, they've been allowed to, but I don't think, you know, for the constitution, they really have that authority.
But I, I don't know that they've been allowed to. Legally, I think they haven't, I don't, I don't know about constitutionally, but legally, by law, they have that authority. They've used it in times before, if you remember when we had a whooping cough outbreak here a couple years ago. They stepped in at that point and started to say, these are the things that need to happen, and they almost, in fact, closed one of our schools down at that time. So this isn't, the, it, it isn't something I haven't seen before, where they've exerted that responsibility and that authority. And, and at, and now this is all, all health departments working with the Utah State Department, and we're following their direction to meet what's gonna have to happen according to the, to the state's health order to have our kids play.
But does it, does it say somewhere, do we have it in print that they have to agree to have their personal health information shared with the state? I mean, they have to agree to share that or their kids can't play.
That came with the, that came with the consent, that came with the certificate.
They have to sign the letter.
It comes with the certificate.
Well, the letter that we sent out was a district.
Yes, and I, and I have called and got explicit instructions that could we, could we override that and just test them? And if they're positive, they go one, and I was told explicitly two different times that absolutely not.
Where is it in writing, that it's part of the health order, or, you know, it's just somebody interpreting that? We don't have a paper trail that says, and this comes down from the state. There's, there's, it, it's.
If you want me to try to chase that down, I, I certainly could, I could try.
It looks, yeah, it looks to me like somebody's interpretation, that it's, you know, you.
Okay, so we have about ten minutes, or you need to wrap that up with.
Yeah, I. Anyway.
So yes, I do think we need to question that and say, where is it in writing?
Well, he can find it out, but, did, let me clarify this, so did that not come with the CLIA certificate? I mean, you had to follow the guidelines in order to be able to be qualified to do this testing. So in order to do that, you had to follow those recommendations, and that's why that is in that letter, is my understanding, is that correct?
Yeah, it, it's part of the CLIA waiver, it's part of the requirements that you accept to go into an agreement.
So every school district has done this CLIA waiver?
Yes, every school district, yes.
And if we don't do that, we're not able, we're, we're not allowed to participate?
We, we are not an approved, everything in the, in this country has regulations and, and we do not follow the regulations to be approved as a, as a temporary testing site.
So every single school district is a, has their own temporary testing site right now, and that's the way it works?
I'm, I believe every single one has, I think there might, I won't say every single one because I think some might have contracted with a department to come in and actually do the testing. And if they did, they might be, like, I reached out to our health department to see if they would be interested in coming and doing our testing, and they were not. But if they had been, we may have been under their CLIA waiver and not had to have our own. We still would've had to follow the CLIA waiver, their data still has to be imported.
And if it's part, if, if a health department does that, then they already have the information, is that accurate? I mean, they, then they have the students' information, because they would do the testing.
I think that they'd still, possibly, but I don't know that. I don't know the answer to that question, if they have all the students' information. They would definitely have it.
Well, they tested them, that's what I'm saying, if they tested students and they already have them.
Oh, if they tested them, they would, they would get all their information just as we have, yes.
And they have that information.
Matt, did you have some more to say?
Just, just a couple of clarification points. The CLIA waiver being a Clinical Laboratory Improvement Act allows us to become an, an independent testing site, and following the guidance of the Utah Health Department, which is in Utah Code, like twenty-six, don't quote me on it, but the twenty-six, they have the authority to issue executive orders and guidance and enforce them, and that's what we're following right now. So if you're looking for that line of authority, it's found in Utah Code, like.
Yeah, I know legally it's there, I, if, if we need the actual code number, we, we could find that, but they legally have that.
Okay, thank you, do you have anything else?
Well, that's, I think that's what we need to provide for parents.
All, if the board has any academic questions, you know, Julie and Christie are both prepared. We are seeing some, some academic changes with our changes, there's some challenges. And so I don't know if you'd want a quick update on what they're seeing academically in those regions.
Does Christie wanna go first, can she hear us?
Christie?
Are you on here, Christie?
Yes, I am.
Do you wanna update us on your end first?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I think the, the, the biggest thing to make note of is, you know, we had some pretty good momentum going in before they moved to a hundred percent distance learning without additional support. And we saw for about two weeks that that just almost completely stopped. We had almost, you know, this very significant drop in learning involvement, and that is picking up again, so we're excited about that. But that is gonna significantly impact learning outcomes for this quarter and will impact, you know, our overall achievement grade, the number of students that will have failing grades that will need to be made up through credit recovery. You know, and that, and that's for a variety of reasons, as we're seeing this uncontrolled outbreak in our communities in the River Region. You know, we have students that are quarantined, and we have, you know, staff members that, you know, have also contracted COVID. We've had multiple family members of both staff and students that have passed away already. So this is a significant social, emotional impact on our students. You know, when you're thinking about getting your work done per class, and these things are happening in your home, that has a real impact. We also really seen, starting to see even more of the economic fallout from people not being able to work. And so that's also impacting our students and their ability to do their schoolwork. You know, things like getting their electricity shut off, they can't charge their Chromebooks. A number of our students didn't, don't have electricity, so they would charge their Chromebooks in their vehicles, and now, you know, there's no gas money, so they're not charging their Chromebooks. So there are some significant challenges. You know, even today, as we sent packets out on buses, we had one bus that came back and only five students even picked up packets. We have a number of students that have stopped picking up meals. I think, you know, we've seen signs in front of homes saying, you know, please do not approach our home due to COVID. So there are some significant challenges with the current situation that's happening on the Navajo Nation. I think also, this really, I think where you're gonna see the biggest impact will be with our students with disabilities, our special education students who really do need more than just a hundred percent virtual. And then, of course, the students who do not have internet. And then we do have a number of seniors that, you know, were not on track to graduate or barely on track to graduate. So we're gonna have some significant impacts there that we'll try to overcome in second semester. So those are, are a number of the challenges that are happening. I, I will, I would like to note though, that the systems that are set up in our schools, in our secondary schools with advisory periods are making a significant difference for us to know what's going on in the home. They've been developing those relationships with those families since the beginning of the school year. So our ability to understand the situation and meet individual needs is, is definitely improved and continues to improve through those advised advisory periods. Any particular questions that you have about the River Region?
Yeah, so Christie, would, would it be optional at all for a child to send a Chromeba- a Chromebook on the bus that day to be charged and sent back, if, would that be an option, if?
That could, that could be an option. I think, you know, for this, wrapping up this quarter, our thought has been to provide, you know, packets for those students who don't have access to their Chromebook or, or don't have internet access, because we still have a number of students, a large, a large number of students without internet access. So I think the thinking has really been, let's wrap up this quarter the best we can. It does, it's been done in a, a number of ways. One is a capstone project at White Horse High School, where they are doing a project based upon their collaborative learning for the whole semester. At Monument Valley High School, they've done some coordinated projects in the same way and some student choice where students can use to do a variety of assignments depending on their own situation. So there are things that we've worked out just to wrap up this, this new year and semester. As we look to the future, that may be something we need to address. And there also, we're trying to communicate with families through our social workers of how to get, you know, additional assistance. Some of that's through the heat assistance program, some of that's through the care funding through the chapter. So there's a variety of resources we're trying to connect families with that should help with some of those situations. And we appreciate Trevor Olton and his work in student services to help us in that area as well. And I do think, you know, this land project, this board, is gonna open up a lot more possibilities for, you know, having successful online learning for students in the River Region. So that really, you know, we're really keeping our fingers crossed, they're really excited to have that land project come online and have more and more families have access to the internet.
Thank you, any questions for Christie? Okay, any for Julie, do you wanna just give us enough there?
I have a question for Christie.
Go ahead, Nelson.
First of all, it's really sad to hear all our challenges down in, in the River Region areas. Here in Monument Valley, it's, it's true, I'm, I'm hearing all these things, family members signing up and writing, so forth. There is, there is a question I have, Christie over in the block, and Montezuma Creek students that are attending schools or in the Blanding schools. I had a concerned parent contacting me about maybe optioning back to the number two options due to the high cases again. So I was just curious, what is, what is going on over there for those students that used to bus south of, of Block area and those from Montezuma Creek that get transported to the Blanding schools? What are, what's the situation there?
I know that number has changed, and I actually think Julie is probably better able to answer that if they're attending Blanding Schools or the superintendent.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that, Nelson. When we made our change in the Mountain Region to eliminate option two based on the factors that we discussed in board meeting, what that left for our students in Blandy, Monticello, and any of those students that were coming up from the River Region as the ones you're explaining and attending the Blanding schools, was they were left with basically three options. One option was option one, as, that would be face-to-face if those that felt comfortable. There was option three, that was ingenuity and, and schools' PLP. And so there still was a, a virtual option that they could utilize if they did not feel comfortable in person. Or we also saw probably as many as, I don't know, eight to twelve, that took advantage of option two at one, at one of the River Region schools. So we saw some go to Montezuma Creek, some to go to White Horse. They hadn't been enrolled in those schools, but they felt that was the best place to, to still use, utilize option two because it still is an option in the River Region where they don't have any option one. We've kept option two there. So they had those three choices, and for the most part, they've settled in. I could let Julie speak, I know there's still probably some adjustment and some concern, but Julie could speak to how they've done as a group, and I'll let you do that.
Yeah, and most of those parents are pretty active, motivated parents, and so they're supporting their child in, oh, sorry, they're supporting their child in that choice. And so for the most part, we're seeing success with those students. You know, if you hear of concerns or, you know, specific things, Nelson, feel free to reach out to me and I can, I can work on those with the schools here of students that we still have traveling back and forth. But for the most part, in the Mountain Region, our numbers as far as quarantine and positive cases look very different in October than they do in November, or in, in December. In November than they do in December, and our numbers are very low. We have, we are not seeing the spread in our schools in either community as far as the spread's starting or coming from or even being in our schools. Very low numbers of students quarantined right now. District widely, when I met with principals yesterday, we have less than ten students that are out right now district-wide in those schools, which is awesome. We had one family just called today, they've been in contact in, in Monticello, direct contact, and it's quarantined, and they've got four students, but really, very low, very little spread. And positive cases, very few with our staff right now. So we're, we're in a pretty good place as far as that goes. Our, our teachers, our staff, our administrators, our parents, our students really are settling in to these, to their option, you know, the, the, the transition from quarter one to quarter two with the options. We have done a lot of outreach through coun- through our counseling departments. We have done a lot of outreach through, uh, coun- through our counseling departments and our teachers and our administrators in communicating with students that were disengaged and a lot of them were fully disengaged by the end of quarter one. Um, our numbers, um, have, have increased as far as their success. Um, from, um, October to November, we'll have those December numbers at the end of this month. But we're encouraged by anywhere from eight to fifteen percent increase, um, of students who had D and S, that students who don't have D and S now. So, and that's both students that we, um, are collecting data from Aspire data, from where they're at with their actual grades. And then on our online platform with Edge Annuity, our option three and our school's P L P, students in the elementary schools P L P. So, um, we're not where we want to be, um, at all as far as we, we see that we are really, um, we're really pedaling hard. But we, um, ha- and we have a ton of work to do, but we are seeing students who have not been engaged become engaged and parents taking on some of that learning cultural and helping their students. And that is very encouraging to us. Our administrators have been huge in, um, just continuing to, and our assistant principals too, in just continuing to call. We have our teachers of record that are calling out weekly to, like, every parent of our eighty-five elementary kids. They are getting called weekly, you can rest assured from their teacher of record. Um, they're not all active, they're not all participating like they should, but they are getting contacted and we are continuing to, to reach out to them.
Okay, and those are the ones on option three?
Yeah, those are our option three students. Yep.
Did you say eighty-five?
There's about, there's approximately eighty-five.
In Blanding and Monticello.
And Monticello.
Or even, even, um, in the River region students that.
Are option.
Could be option three that, that live down in the River region.
Oh.
And what was?
Cause we are those students that come up on buses when, when we moved to.
Okay.
With the first of the year, many of them wanted to stay virtual.
That's elementary option three. That doesn't include our Edge Annuity second, secondary option three students. So there's more of those.
Good.
But really for the most part, I mean, the changes, the teachers really appreciate the opportunity to focus on their face to face and then their students that are quarantined or, you know, we have our students every day that their parents are gonna go somewhere and they get checked out and they, I mean, so we're, we're dealing with that.
Yeah.
Them being gone on a normal basis too. Um, but the fact that they can focus on the curriculum and delivery in two ways instead of three is, has been really powerful, um, and supportive.
Thank you. Nelson, did that answer your question?
Um, so I, oh, I've had to get with superintendent and Julie and talk about it a little bit more again, I guess. Um, I do, I did wanna, um, make a comment on, on the other discussion with the testing earlier. Um, why not test all the students rather than test them that are participating in sports and other extracurricular stuff? So, yeah, that was just what I was thinking too.
That question came out Nelson in a couple of meetings and the, the legalities of testing all students in to, um, the basic right of education is a very, very, uh, fundamental right of this country. And so to test all students and to in any way imply that you might infringe on that right is a very, very, could be a very, very complicated legal battle. The right for extracurricular activities is not very strong. Uh, that's played out in the courts across this country. That they, they have a very, very small right to an extracurricular activity. So to, to require a parent to sign authorization for something like testing for extracurricular activities does not present any level of the same level of possible litigation or those type of, um, issues that could, they don't come into it with extracurricular activities. That's why. But I think they are kind of trying to get a feel for, you know, if we test two hundred of our students in the Blanding and Monticello area and, and we feel like we have, you know, fifteen hundred, we at least probably have a pretty good sample size. It's not, you know, I don't wanna claim I think it's, it's, um, extremely accurate, but I do think it at least gives us an indicator of a sample size of how we're doing as a student body. But I think they're gonna use those numbers to at least a little bit, um, come away with some idea of what are we seeing in that age population across the state.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move to our directory report. So Trevor, I have you scheduled first. Would you like to come up please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
I think I just turned the time over to you, correct?
That's, that's correct. So, um, we'll just go, who would like to start? Have you looked at your slides? And with all your, uh, logos on your first, um, slide, you're quite a busy person.
We, we wanted to, we wanted to represent many of those groups because they are important to our district and a lot of those relationships that we've been building and focusing on have a huge tremendous, um, supportive effort in helping our school district right now. And so I thought it was appropriate that we show some of those things that, that have been influential.
That's great. And they're very intertwined completely, right? So, um, um, who's going first? Steve, did you wanna? Okay. So, I just gotta find which slide I'm up for you. Your, one of your things you put down is you're gonna increase parent engagement opportunities by twenty percent. Of course, we have some great limitations now. Do you wanna explain how that's gonna work in your department?
Yeah, so, so a lot of our, our, a lot of our parent engagement and, and that's really where the focus is right now, is parent engagement, not involvement. We want parents to be engaged and we're working with schools to use their funding to be creative in the ways that we're doing that. Um, one of the examples of that would be some of the, uh, Facebook Live events and as well as Mrs. Schaefer was able to, to demonstrate how to do that with the Family Fence Project. We were able to get funding and, and help, um, to be able to get the, the artwork, the teachers were asking, design your own art, artwork. Uh, Principal Schaefer was able to coordinate, um, family times to come in and help do the student artwork on the fence as a family. And so they were able to, and I don't know if you've seen pictures of that, I thought about adding pictures there, but.
That'd be great if you could send.
I, I didn't know how much, how much pictures and, and extra you wanted in here, but we, um, anybody that's been down to White Horse will immediately recognize the fence because there is some amazing artwork there. That was done, um, in a social distancing way that families could come in together at a certain time and, and we commend Principal Schaefer for thinking outside the box and, and looking at the ways that we can do that. And those are the opportunities that we're trying to, um, help them because their family is able to come in together and when they're there, they're, they're getting connected to the internet, they're making sure that they have a working Chromebook, they're working on making sure that they have everything they need while they're doing that activity. So that when they go home, they have their packet of work and their logins and their Canvas, um, reports and they can get access to everything. So they used it as an opportunity to engage the whole family with a, with a fun project and it got, um, a lot of people there. Anybody that's seen that project is, knows it's amazing project.
And, and that all took place before the latest health order, correct?
It did.
Just make sure we don't confuse that that's not happening now.
Yeah, so we.
Are you seeing it?
I, I have no.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll definitely share that with you. Um, but those are the type of ideas that, that we're asking people to be creative during this time because we know we are limited. Um, some of the schools that have done videos, we've had a lot of good information on, on feedback with, um, Facebook Live where people are able to ans- uh, ask questions to a principal or administrator in real time. Um, because not only is the principal able to, to get a lot of information out, but they're also an, able to answer questions. That's very different than what we've been able to do in the past. Um, but we're really trying to engage the c- in community in different ways and use our funding to be able to, to help support that.
So, your Hope Squad, I mean, that was a great resource. And I mean, now we've got students that are home all day that, can they still tap into that? How do they tap into those resources, I guess what I'm saying?
Yeah, they, we still have all of the same resources. The engagement piece is what's different for us is trying to have them access, um, a lot of those resources. We still use the Safe UT app and we send that out a lot to try to, to help students, um, remember that there's somebody to talk to. So we do have a Safe UT report. Anytime of the night, um, a student can reach out to a, a certified mental health therapist using that app and they can do it by chat or they can do it by the phone. So we'll have students that will chat that have mental health concerns, they'll chat with a therapist throughout the night. That therapist will, and Safe UT will send that to a school counselor the next morning. And they will say, here's our report, please follow up. And there are some situations where that therapist will reach out to a meta- uh, medical professional or the police if necessary to help provide the support they need during the night. Um, so we still have access to almost all of those resources, but the most, um, I put on there a lot, prevention, prevention, prevention. Um, just at the state office, Vern Larson said that all the time, but it, it's, it's a hard thing to spend time on, but you get a lot of bang for your buck when you're spending period, period programs. So we're trying to have students understand how to help other students, um, in a positive, pro-social way, um, so that they can help. Um, you, be looking for things that, because they're way more influential than, than our teachers and, and other community members are, um, they, they look first to their peers.
Sure. So, did you, um, anything?
Yeah, um, what was my other one? I have, I have two and maybe I'll re- okay. So it's always, it's been a concern for a long, long time with, um, suspensions and expulsions. What really happens to kids who, you know, safely can't continue in our schools? There's a, there's a reason why some students are expelled or ex- or, um, suspended. Um, but then the concern is what happens to them and what's the answer? So, you know, you've got in your celebrations, suspensions and expulsions by over, or decreased, so have decreased. Suspensions and expulsions over ninety-four percent by implementing the peacemaking alternatives. So explain the details of the peacemaking and how the alter- how that's alternative and how that's working?
Yeah, so we, we actually use, peacemaking was one of the alternatives, but we use actually a lot of alternatives um, in our discipline matrix to give students additional support, um, so that when we were seeing a behavior in the school, it may be a behavior that, um, the student is having because something else is going on. And Christie alluded a little bit to the, some of those social emotional things. Um, for example, a student would come and have an outburst and we would realize that, that something happened the night before. Or it wasn't actually the outburst that was as much of a concern as trying to help provide support so the student was stable, um, in school. So some of those, um, alternatives are UNHS mental health. So UNHS counselors, um, work in the schools quite a bit and will make referrals there. Peacemaking is a conflict resolution, um, uh, process that we use with traditional peacemakers. And their objective is to have two sides help, um, two sides come together with the resolution. So if a student is acting out and, um, the school is struggling with that behavior, the peacemaker will actually go through that process with those, with those students to re- resolve the peace between the school and that student. And sometimes that will be, um, helping them th- through traditional stories or, um, coming up with solutions in that process to make sure everybody's on the same page. We also use standalone counseling. We also use our own, uh, native youth advocates, social workers that can provide interventions to try to keep the student in school. So when that behavior is happening, a lot of times the referral instead of went, instead of a suspension, would go to a social worker to figure out what was going on before that suspension came. Because absolutely if, if scoo- students, um, or school safety is ever in jeopardy, if we support suspensions absolutely a hundred percent. And we support our pr- principals that when they need to keep the school safe and that is their alternative, they need to make that suspension first. But anytime that we s- we see somebody acting out or having concerns in the classroom, a lot of times a counselor, therapist, social worker, interaction can come up with some solutions. Um, you know, one of the examples that, that I came across very quickly was a student that was late every day to school. Our traditional, um, process gave them citations, lunge, lunge attentions. A referral went to the social worker who realized that, who helped realize that the student was walking, essentially, to school every day before they came to school. And so by getting a ride to the other student and helping work out that si- situation, the student wasn't late again. And traditionally that would have been a suspension because it just kept happening and we weren't able to figure it out. So those alternatives, we're trying to, trying to look at it differently and say, what's really re- what's really going on? Rather than jumping to the conclusion that it, that they're trying to cause trouble. So that's a huge, uh, part of that ninety-four percent.
That's great. Okay, my other question is, um, h- how long have you been in this position? And that's not the real question. That's a lead into this next. How, how long's it been now?
In, in service.
In this position that you're in right now?
Student services, uh, year.
It's been a whole year?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so my question is, what is the biggest, um, maybe s- surprise in a, in a good way? And, and, and what are the biggest challenge, you know, what's the biggest challenge? Or, you know, what are some things that, um, maybe need to overcome? But what's, what are the good things about this position that you've discovered that maybe you, you know, that you haven't thought of?
I think, um, on, on one of these slides up here, um, in count, I must be back, one is right there. So in working with, um, education and, uh, the counseling side and the student services side, there is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. And I don't know if you were able to look at that or, or know much about that, but really there is a need for students to have basic needs um, met before they can move up that. And one of the, one of the challenges and surprises for me is we have a lot of students, um, just on this alone. Our county is the poorest teenage group in the state of Utah. We self-report, um, to the Sharp Survey, uh, at a higher rate that our students are requesting mental health. Um, they're wanting that and they're the highest risk category for being not only, uh, po- having poverty as a youth, but becoming, um, that same category as an adult. And so one of the biggest surprises for me, um, has been how many students need that support in our schools. And that is a big project to help. Um, our teachers do that, our, our social workers, our administrators do everything they can to work at that basic level to help work that, that up. And then, um, the biggest surprise for me is the, the amount of, uh, budgeting that is required from that to make sure that that all gets, uh, not from the application to getting the funds, to expending those funds and, and, um, all of those projects, um, that were shared on there, all independently have to require their own process to get those funds. And that is a big, big task to keep up with. Um, and so that, that is one of the challenges, keeping up with all those applications and then, and then not only that, but then the reporting side when you're done with that money, you've gotta send all of your reports back, so.
And that's an ongoing, as in annual or quarterly, monthly? What, what do you, we.
Yeah, so the whole process takes about a year to, from applying to the funds, budgeting the funds. Um, and some of those challenges, um, we, we were advocating for sustainability money for some of our turnaround schools that exited. Um, and we were advocating for some s- what they call sustainability money. Uh, one of the challenges with that is we lost some of that money in the spring. So we weren't able to budget some of those things that we were wanting to continue. Um, that sustainability money came in, in December and needs to be spent by September. So one of the challenges is, you know, is that i- i- to hire a person or to look at how to spend that from now and have that done by the summer is a challenge. But some of those projects, you know, we're hoping that, you know, credit recovery and, and some of the programs that we might be able to run in the summer would be able to, to access students through the internet. So we're hoping to find ways that we can continue some of that with those sustainability money. Uh, but it is a challenge to, to budget and get that spent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. We appreciate what you do.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Trevor.
Wow. Good, awesome. How are you?
Good. Good evening. My name is Brenda Whitehorse.
You're welcome to take your mask off if you'd like, or you're welcome to wear it. Sometimes we can just.
Well, I have a pretty, um, good voice that kinda goes out, so I think I'll be fine. Uh, yeah, A, my name is Brenda Whitehorse. Um, that's all it in the entrance and the genie bash is changing, he only the should not what you need to change. I, this is my year, first year too, so just get that out of the way. And, um, I don't know if you see my presentation, but this is my first time presenting to the board, so I wasn't too sure what to expect. Um, since, you know, I'm not new to the district, but I'm new to this process of how you.
We are too.
We are too.
So, and then of course, the superintendent highlighted the heritage language conference and.
Oh, yeah.
So I actually pulled it up last night to get on and I had to have a little bit of training from Erin to find it. And I will go home, but I heard nothing but good about that, so thank you.
Yeah, I, we were very pleased with that. Um, it took everyone in our department to kinda help out. Um, I actually went with, um, I, what was his name? I just c- Mr. Palmer. I'd just been calling him Mr. Palmer, but, um, I knew his brother, his name was Parker, but, um.
Lane, I think his name's Lane.
Yeah, Lane. Okay, so we went out and we, um, we recorded all of those presentations and, um, it was just really great to see all the presenters present. And then, um, to actually capture the whole district and, um, what's unique about our school district. and the people that are in our district. So i- I was very pleased with it and everybody tripped in. Um, and then my program um secretary, but I think their call, what do you call those?
Administrative assistant.
Administrative assistants. So uh she was able to put together the website and all of that, and she worked really hard on it. And I was very pleased, um, everybody just kinda pitched in and made it what it was.
It's not the door, I promise.
So. Um, I guess one of the things that I wanna present to the board is just to let the board know that our Title VI um program and then also our JOM program is in good standing. Uh, we have been making a lot of progress with our curriculum, um, aligning our curriculum to the Navajo Nation standards. And then one of the things that I would like to work on this upcoming year is to get more um specific data about our Native American students so that we can track the progress that they're making um and see if they're achieving um at the same level as their peers in other schools. And, you know, what type of services we might continue to provide and support so that they can be more successful in school. Uh, last year, um, as you know, with the pandemic, it was very hard for students. So during graduation, we got some extra funding from Title VI. And um, you know, we decided to purchase stalls for Native American graduates. And I know they're looking forward to that this year, so I thought that would be a great way to um increase our graduation rate, um, get students excited for graduation. I also do like how we have the Quest model. And I know there's a lot of challenges right now with the virtual learning in the San Juan River schools. Um, I hear about all those challenges every week in our PLCs with the Heritage Language teachers. And one of the things that we're trying to do is be more creative in how we use our funding to provide incentives for our students and then provide the resources of what they need at school so that they can have the materials that they need to do the work. So, um, and then the the teachers themselves also are um trying to be more creative in how to meet the needs of the students. Right now we have tremendous challenges with technology. So um there, we got really excited at the beginning of the year because all of our Heritage Language teachers had a Canvas course and all of them were starting to learn about technology and how to utilize that in the classroom. Um, and then our tails kinda um fell down, you know, like how Coyote's tail during the winter, Coyote just goes kinda crazy in the winter, right? So um this is kinda what happened to us. Our tail went down because um we're finding out there's all kinds of challenges with technology. Students will start lessons, the internet will stop in the middle of the lesson, they won't get through a video. Um, they were having t- trouble downloading assignments. So um we're gonna go back to paper packets in in a lot of our San Juan River schools because the other challenge that we have is teachers are um only coming into the building like twice a week to make their copies and do their planning and have access to the internet, which has also been another challenge for us. So, but with all the challenges, uh, we do have the best team of teachers um in our district and they're very supportive and very caring and they do care about our students. So um I think that's a huge celebration along with the, with the conference. So I don't know if you have any specific questions you have for me.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Steve, did you?
Just to say that.
Okay.
Nelson, one second, Steve was asking, and then I'll turn the time to you.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I've seen your name a lot and it's good to finally put a face to a name and and uh to hear about what you're doing and your program. Thank you very much for it.
Thanks.
Okay. Nelson.
Yes?
Go ahead.
Okay, first of all, I want to take uh this Whitehorse for the uh great job that she's doing with the bilingual program in San Juan School District and the conference that they put together, so thank you, I appreciate that. Uh, question I have is, um, so are are you still having um the Indian Education Committee members meet monthly?
Yes.
Virtually? Okay.
Not virtually, they they've been meeting in person, just like you, you know, we have some school board members here, so they've been coming each month and we've been holding our IUC meetings.
Okay, cool, great, awesome. Now, what about the funding and with the JOM? Um, are those monies being spent on time or how how are we on track? Or is the central office from Winderock giving some exceptional on timeline because of the pandemic or anything like that?
Yeah, our funding of our um JOM funds is actually going really smooth. Uh, we've been getting in a lot of expenditure re- expenditure requests from all of the schools that have JOM funds. And a lot of that is due to uh materials and resources that are needed at home for virtual learning. So uh we have quite a few requests that come in each month and they're approved by the IUC. And then those funds, um, after they're approved, Joa- Joanna lets the school program administrators or, not administrators, what do you call them again? Secretaries. Administrative assistants.
There you go.
Let them know so that they can get those materials ordered.
Okay, good. Now, one more question. Because of the pandemic, I I I know for a fact that trainings and whatnot are not happening for IUC members or parents. But are those happening as well virtually or anything?
Well, for the IUC, like I said, they've been very active. They've been coming in person each month for their IUC meetings. All the information that's needed for them has been given to them during those IUC meetings. So they're in good standing in terms of getting the information that they need. Um, with parents, I think the Heritage Language Conference pretty much um was geared towards our parents and all of our stakeholders to get additional professional development for them. Um, and so in the terms of specific parent involvement training, uh, JOM and Title VI offers more of the resources. And if the schools want to have a guest speaker, um, then they can request that as one of their expenditure requests. And then, of course, the IUC will approve it. So that's how a lot of the guest speakers go to the schools and that's how it's paid out of JOM. So it's not something that I have to plan for them, but it's 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 mainly coming from the school, what their needs are.
Right, right. Um, it sounds like same format, so, well, it's good to hear that those things are still happening even though we had, you know, having to deal with this pandemic, but uh I do appreciate it though, thank you for your time.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much. We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Trevor.
Okay. Oh, yes. Uh, let's go to number three, ten minutes.
Yes, um, number three is a kind of a follow-up uh discussion that we've had regarding the USU proposal for developing an educational site in Monument Valley. If you remember, we've discussed this and talked about it. Um, I think when we left the last discussion, we were talking more about location than anything. And so if you notice on here, there is a map and and one of the discussions I did have with Mr. Hostler before we left was they had done a little bit of looking into this and and still feel more strongly about, more positive about the location back towards the housing than out along the highway. There are um infrastructure in place, there's plumbing, there's there's water. There used to be some trailers right there, so there is some infrastructure to utilize. And so that was a proposal. Um, my only thought or question was the volume of traffic that might now go through that area if if they utilize the same access road. Um, but I I just basically, it's on here for to continue this discussion and to see what the board would like to do to move this forward.
So if they were on the front, which, or was there access road?
They'd have to develop a, an access point.
Is this, is this a road or just a line?
Uh, I think it's just a line. There are problems with that site that was pointed out to me. That this is actually a septic tank uh or a.
Ledge failed.
L- l- thank you. Um, a ledge failed right here and then the alternate is over in this area if we need it, an additional one. So to to move into any of this area is problematic to our future of being able to expand if needed.
So what is this line?
I think that's a, actually a a trail between the two schools.
There's a dirt road that goes from TDS to the high school.
So I mean, a trail or a road? A dirt road.
It's a sandy, dirty road.
You can probably take a vehicle on it, but it's.
So realistically, if the traffic got, we felt heavier there, you could always divert it some way and use this road and come up in. I mean, really, how much traffic are we thinking?
I don't know, that's where I think that it might be wise to explore that just a little bit of how much traffic would this bring? What are we projecting? I, I think that would take a little bit of a study, um, and and somebody beyond. We have not looked into that yet, so that was my only thought as I looked at this. But, I mean, I think the idea of building this facility within, you know, s- i- i- I think has been fairly supported. Um, the location has been the issue, so um we c- we could, I don't know if the board would wanna, would ever wanna say, you know, we we are favorable to the idea. We wanna work out the idea, the the details on the location, but. And and, you know, this might even be something that, as we, as we bring in a new BA, that they would pick up and and work through, but I don't know how timely exactly it is. I don't think, at visiting with Mr. Olson last time, that this was something that, I think they'd like to know that there's a high probability of it happening. The actual location, I don't think, is the make or break for them right now. They've, they've got a lot of fundraising to do and things that would give us time to maybe look at best where to put it.
So it's more whether we support the proposal to.
Yes, I think so, that I, and I'll be visiting with him, I actually have a meeting with him tomorrow. Um, I think it's next Tuesday actually, but I have a meeting with him very recent in in the near future. We could visit more about that, but that's how I remember the discussion with him. That this is still a lot of fundraising away. Um, but they'd like to know that there's something to fundraise for.
Sure. Steve, do you have any comments?
Um, I'm still supportive of the idea, um, between these two. One of the things I thought about was if you went south.
I can barely hear Steve.
Oh, sorry, you get the same.
Just looking at these two options here, one of the things I thought about, if you went south of the teacher's housing there, then if you had a shared maintenance agreement, it would save both of the institutions some funds for like that road going in there, you know, if you had a dream choir, you know, they're using, we're using it. Have a shared maintenance agreement then.
That's great, I know. Okay, Nelson, do you or you still have any comments?
Well, uh, first of all, I do agree with superintendent with the uh, the old uh bubble home site there. Um, the traffic and what concerns me is the loop that you can see there where the the bus, the school bus usually loop there and line up next to the school building to transport kids. And even though the buses are lined up, then you've got parents and others um pretty close, so it's gonna be congestion there, is what I'm seeing. Um, uh, maybe, maybe superintendent is right, maybe with the uh further studying of the traffic and maybe the next uh business administrator's input and, I think we've seen you with the more looking, but with support of the community and others there, they they are in favor of of doing the college put play in place there in their community so they can have access to, whether they haven't been traveled or landing in others areas or schooling. So that's my, that's my piece on it.
So this item is on as an action item, just basically if we choose to accept the proposal to develop? That doesn't mean that has a, that doesn't mean that um will result in where it will be placed, but it's just more or less to move on, correct, Siri?
Yeah, I think you could, you could pass a motion that just says, we support the project and we will work out the details as, you know, like I said, maybe a new business administrator will work closely with the college to work those out.
Okay. Okay. Lucille, did you have any comments? Okay. All right, does this d- r- question, can the map, I just am curious to look at, okay, just to look at something. Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Aaron.
I'm on my computer too.
I don't know, it's easier to take a dark. We're going to discuss our internet project.
Yes, our LAN project.
And I love your screen.
Well, I, I, it's a, you know, it kinda helps us um understand some of the things that I'm, um, that I'll be talking about. Um, one of the first things, it's, uh, this is the, this is the information that we've been uh providing to parents uh and community members as well as chapter presidents and um those around it. It's, 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 it's a fairly simple process, but it kinda shows um and highlights some of the things that are important. Uh, you know, one of the things we always try to tell people is it's not, um, it is a LAN access project, so it's not, um, there's not a lot of, um, you can't watch Netflix and 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 some of those things on it. But uh you would be able to access educational resources, educational videos and those kinds of things. The other piece of this that um is kind of nice is I wanted to show specifically uh the different types of mounts that we use in um at the residence. Um, this one, I've got a little better picture right here. Uh, so this is a, this is a a tower that we put in, I think that one's about twenty-nine feet tall. It is guy-wired uh down, um, and we had Johnson in the mill give us some, uh, give us the plans for it. This is what, when I refer to what's uh called an IDT or an independent distribution tower, this is what most of the IDTs look like. Um, the MDTs or the main distribution towers are the large towers. They're more like the ones we have um out in the district, uh, or out in our parking lot. This is one that's being built on uh Rappleye Ridge.
Are there some buzzards that have adopted that or?
Yeah. Yeah, they're, they're, they're looking up there and, but it's cold in the winter up on Rappleye, I'm telling you that, and so. Yeah, it's a really high spot. So uh I'm gonna refer to a couple of things, I'm gonna refer to uh the main distribution tower, so MDTs, uh, when I show you my uh my little map here.
Hang on one minute, Aaron.
Sure.
Nelson and Lucille, do we still have you both? Are you there, Lucille?
I'm here, I'm dead with weed.
Okay, as long as we didn't lose you, I just, very good, thanks.
Um, so this is, this is our, this is kind of our working map that we've been uh using and working off of to um design and to build uh, to build the network. As I should, as I just pointed out with the MDT towers, the main distribution towers um are right there. And if they're yellow, they are currently built or being built. So we still have, uh, we still have about four or five towers that we're working on. We have worked with the uh chapters on getting those, but these are the main distribution towers. They'll carry the largest radios um that will push out um to our smaller towers. Um, the way these were engineered is really with um a pair of binoculars and um a topographic map to see, to make sure that we could get that line of sight and get those um, and and hit all of our sites. So our MDTs are there, and then when we go down to our uh independent distribution towers, uh, those, I'm just gonna pop these MDTs off, these are our independent distribution towers. Those are the lo- those are the Rome Towers, the thirty-foot towers. And I wanna show you one area in particular um that is uh quite something. Uh, Chris and Wesley have really worked uh hard to. Uh, Chris and Wesley have really worked, uh, hard to, um, be putting all of these things in. But this is Old Jato Mesa here. And I was kind of explaining this, Old Jato Mesa is beautiful and it's big and it's long and it's, um, and it is, uh, it is a difficult place to get radio signals from. So, on Old Jato Mesa, you can see, uh, we have our high schools here. And then each of these yellow towers, we have small radios on and we bounce all the way around, um, we bounce all the way around in a horseshoe, we haven't been able to get from this point to this point yet, um, because it's, uh, there's a few things there, but we, we were able to get all the way around Old Jato Mesa with the independent distribution towers. So, those are the second kind of in that, uh, in that chain. We have some, um, called IDN nodes, and those are smaller towers that look more like, um, they look a little more like, uh, these that are on the houses. And sometimes they'll have, uh, they'll have one or two radios on them that will point out to, to smaller. So, we go from the really big towers down to some that can, uh, carry a little bigger, uh, radio and then, and then into the homes that way. Um, now, the, the final hop or the final jump that we have in this system is to, uh, what's called dead end nodes, D E Ns. That means that they don't go any further, that's the homes, um, that we, um, will outfit with a small receiver that will get that, um, signal from those larger towers. And if you look, that's our six hundred, this is not because it's a, um, that's our six hundred or about five hundred, uh, student homes that will be putting those dead end nodes on. And those are small radios, uh, that will pick up the signal. The whole system, um, and then there, uh, there are some nodes that were, that are inactive, that we're not able to get to at this point uh, due to, um, electric concerns or, um, some extreme topographical type things.
Aaron?
Yes?
What are those green dots, like in the outskirts?
Oh, these, I think they're just peaks.
Okay.
So, uh, so Duff Creek's right there if you're wondering.
Oh.
But, so you have, uh, you have these, uh, main distribution towers, your independent distribution towers, independent nodes, and then you have the path, and we shoot these paths around. We have to go through a couple of things to get past, there's two different kinds of radios, there's licensed and unlicensed. And the licensed spectrum is reserved so that you don't, um, use the same frequency and cross and mess somebody else up. So, if we, if there were a bunch of, um, you know, eleven megahertz radios around, it would, it would not work. So, they say, well, we're going to give this group or this, uh, school district these many radios, uh, with this frequency, so, and, um, so we've been doing, doing some of that. That is, um, that's kind of where we're at right now. We spent last week out at, um, Navajo Mountain, and we got all of their, uh, nodes in. I don't think we've updated that yet, but, um, we come from Clay Hills, we come down into here, and then we distribute out to, uh, to those dead end nodes. The, the other piece of this obviously is the, is the funding that, that comes along with it, uh, and the, the need for us to continue doing that. We've spent currently about one point four million dollars on radios, on labor, on, um, um, service and those kinds of things. We, uh, we're working closely with the state, uh, to see about the sunset of the, um, CARES Act money that is the thirty-first. And we're working with, um, the state and the governor's office, and they feel like they'll be able to, to help us do that.
That's, I mean, that's really important, yes, this, this is not projected to be completely done by the end of December, which is where that money, uh, dries up unless we get that extension. So, we are working very diligently on that, and, uh, we have a little bit of hope that that will be granted, but we have not received complete. And there's also some talk and hope of an additional, um, stimulus package coming out that may have some money that could go towards something like this as well, so.
Right. And so, we prioritize the larger, uh, MDTs and IDTs, uh, in the initial part of the project because they're the lion's shares of, of the money and of the cost. The, the radios on the homes are much cheaper and much, um, easier to put in. We can preorder all our radios, so we'll have all the radios on hand.
So, just a couple of things that, before we leave this. First of all, board, I, I think it's really, I am hearing from others who are looking at this, that this is very advanced, this is cutting edge. We are probably, I have not heard of any other district in the United States that's tried something like this and, and made this go. So, um, if you've ever wondered if we're in some areas, right out there in the very front, I think on this we are. Um, and, and I, I very much want to, um, pay tribute to Aaron, uh, Chris, that your department, the others that have been involved. Uh, Wesley, there's been a tremendous effort over there, and it's not been completely ideal. When they give you four million dollars and it comes kind of through a process again, because everything comes through a process, they didn't just give you four, they, they, they allocate four hundred dollars, and then the idea of how you're going to get it and having it all processed and all of that is a whole nother process to go through. And the clock, but the clock starts ticking because they tell you, oh, well, definitely December thirty-first, it's over. So, basically, I think, I look at it like, they pretty much gave them a year's worth of work and said, get it done in about two months. Because by the time we got the money, that's about what we've had. And it's, there's been some bumps and some struggles, and there still are. I mean, I look at this and the next thing I say is, maintenance. There are a lot of radios, there are a lot of houses got little things on them. Um, we are trying to secure a maintenance agreement that will be for at least a number of years. We don't see this as a forever project, that's also very important to know. It might get, uh, there, there might be very, people might see it as very favorable and want it to be. The idea here was that at some point fibers coming in, which will provide a very, very quality internet, um, capability and, uh, resource to the area. Something has to fill the gap, especially during this pandemic time. Um, but, we do see it, there being still quite a bit of a window that we're going to need to fill before that's all up and going and available and, and affordable and all of that. So, maintenance for maybe even a three or four-year window is pretty important, and we're going to look into that as well because there's going to be a little bit, you know, our, we do not want our tech department now to become a maintenance department totally of the system, but just be aware, those are some of the challenges we're still wrestling with.
Okay, these updates are fun, okay.
I have a question, the, no, these, um, end nodes, is that what they're called?
Mm-hmm.
They're on, they go to homes of students of, I mean, they have to be a student of San Juan School District. So, there's homes out there that don't have these, is that accurate?
Right, yes.
Exactly.
And so, just for instance, what if there is a senior and no more students at that home? Come May, come graduation time, what happens? Do, do those families keep that, they, do they get to have internet beyond that? Or does it go to another home that may have a new student, um, next year that maybe has, you know, kid goes into kindergarten, first grade.
So, we will, so the kids coming in, uh, to kindergarten, first grade, that will be, uh, you know, that will be a process when we register them. Uh, we'll pull those in and, and, and put those up. The idea is that the ones that are on the home, we don't plan on taking them off. They have what's, um, they have a, uh, the network is an SSID, they have an SSID that is Edurome. And Edurome's a really nice, um, educational, uh, network. So, kids at, uh, the university, if they're taking college classes, they would be able to use their Edurome. Um, some of the teachers would be able to if they had that, but we hadn't, we don't have any plans of, of removing those out of the homes once, once that's the case. So, yeah, no.
Okay, and, and I think it was explained once that this, they can't access just anything with this internet in their home, is that right?
Right, it's, 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 uh, the same basic, uh, network that our schools have. So, it's filtered, uh, it will be filtered through, um, through our filters and also, uh, the, um, the Chromebook filters. So, yes, it's a, it's a filtered internet program, uh, and it has to be.
And connected only to the, to, um, San Juan School District equipment?
No, the, so the network is, the network is filtered, uh, the Edurome network is a, is a educational.
Okay, so they can, they can connect it to their television, to their own computer, their own laptop, their, their TV, their, um, I don't know, Wii?
Yes. Sure, they can, but they can't watch Netflix on it, they can't play video games on it. I mean, if they wanted to watch, uh, 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 you know, a lecture from, from, they could do that, but it wouldn't be.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, and thank the whole, you know, Superintendent already mentioned that people who are working, I mean, you know, we really appreciate.
Thank you.
Well, all the work from everybody in your department that's there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, Superintendent.
Okay, I'll just pass those to your way there, just, this is just, um, you, you're aware that we now have a vacancy in our business administrator. I wanted to bring you up on a couple of things. Um, the way I, I kind of want to present this in twofold. The first, the first area is just what's being done to, um, send out our message and to open up and provide a broad resource of our announcement, a broad screening, uh, how far is our net going out there? So, this is the brochure that was developed, HR office put the work into this, and we worked with USB A on this a little bit, and they helped as well. We now have this on our website, it's been on there for, what, two weeks, a week and a half, it's been there a little while. Um, it's, so we're, we're, we are certainly have it there, we, uh, the USB A sends this out to around five hundred different districts, universities, um, business departments of universities in a multi-state ra- range is what I was told. So, they send it out pretty broadly. It's on the Navajo Times we're advertising, the San Juan Record, and we're trying to just make sure that it, it is well advertised and those that would want to be in, informed are informed of this opening. And so, that's what's happening as far as the, the, um, recruitment and trying to make sure the word is out. Are there any questions or thoughts in, in that area?
It's nice. Did not create this. Go ahead.
We kind of took the, an old one, revised it, Matt added some more, um, new pictures and, yeah.
I wasn't sure if this was being presented to us for approval or for, like, non, so.
No, it's really an informational item.
Some of my points are kind of moved, or, if it's already out there, so.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'd still maybe like to get those for future, it would probably be very good to have. We did move very quickly, um, if we, we felt like we waited till tonight, we'd lose about two weeks because this has been out for about two weeks, and we just felt like so, and we didn't know, we, so anyway. My other concern then is surviving the interim period. Um, you're very much aware that our BA position is a big job, there is a lot that has to be done. And that still has to be done even without a, without a present BA. And so, we really need to talk about what is the best way to go forward. It is important that we have some type of an interim plan in place, there has to be a balance of checks in place as we go forth. Um, I think the, I don't know, I've looked at it from a lot of ways. I have reached out to the Business, um, Association, the BA Association, Mr. Todd Haber up at Park City, and he said he would try to see if there's anyone that might want to fill in on a temporary basis, but he, he didn't give me a lot of hope that he would find somebody. He said he could throw out some feelers and throw out some emails, haven't heard back from him on that. Um, I think we're probably looking at an in-district solution to try to cover the duties and divide them up. Uh, we do, one thing that is in our favors is that we do have a pretty deep staff in that office, and they're, they're very effective and so efficient, I believe we can, that is definitely going to play in our favor. But, I do have at least an idea, I think it's a better idea to present in an executive session because it will go into, uh, personnel and positions and, um, those type of, of discussions that I think lends better to an executive session. But, I do think we, we need, the board needs to address tonight, how do we move forward and ensure that the responsibilities are covered? And I, like I said, it can be divided, it can be looked at in multiple ways. Um, and if we thought there was somebody that could step in on a, a temporary basis, that could work. We are projecting, if you look at this announcement, we have worded this in a, in a kind of a strategic way. If you look at the very first page there, we talk about, um, the first review will be January fifteenth, which is prior to our board meeting in January, we can bring those to, and decide exactly what you would like to do, if you, how you'd like to screen and what steps you'd like to have. But, it's, but it's written in a way that if the board feels they're ready to move, we could, and there's a, there's a, the board deems that there's a quality pool, you could move forward and, and make this, you could make decisions in that board meeting in January to outline steps to move forward. If the board wanted to extend it and to a second review, in January, the board could certainly make that step too. That's why that's strategically written that way. So, you have the ability to, to, um, be as patient or, or move in January, or be more patient and move later. Just based on what you feel is in your, is in the district's best, best interest, what does the depth of the pool look like? Um, so anyway, um.
Okay, any questions? Okay, uh, Nelson, Lucille, any questions? Okay.
No, no question for me.
All right, let's move to the realignment.
Um, again, this is just a, a, uh, for your information, this probably can be very quick. Uh, this is the first consideration, but as of today, they were hearing, they were having hearings on those who wanted to appeal to go up or down, you had to be a bubble school to do that, we actually had one bubble school that could appeal, and that would have been San Juan had the, the, the opportunity to appeal. San Juan was already placed in the, the two-way ranks, they could have appealed to be a one-A football school though because if you are in the bubble area and your free and reduced is over fifty percent, you can appeal to go down. They did not want to do that, they wanted to stay two-way football, two-way everything. And Monticello was the other school that was moved, they were moved from two-way back to one-A, that made them, they were much more pleased with that. And so, our schools actually have come out where they'd like to be, we're very fortunate. With that said, I want to just sit, tell all the board that I do think that when the one-A representative person that is on the Board of Trustees' position comes open, we don't want to miss that window to be a little bit strategic. I was expecting, I was just watching, not really expecting, but watching. This is a pretty big moment for a representative to reach out to a district and say, hey, just wondering where you're at, are you all happy? What would you like to see? Now, it did work out in our behalf, but I did not hear, and I don't, I don't know if any of you did from our representative, that if you remember when that vote was taken at our, at our conference, he was going to be very proactive at times like this to reach out to us. So, we have a lot of votes in one-A now especially, and I think if we're strategic, we might be able to place somebody on that Board of Trustees', which would be helpful, but I just make that point. The bottom line here is all of our schools, I think for the most part, are happy. I do think White Horse and Monument Valley still have to decide, are they coming back in one-A football under Utah High School Association Football? Are they going to stay independent and play on the Navajo Nation schedule? So, that is a decision that they will make, and, and I'll be visiting with them to, uh, get their input on that. But, that's probably, other than that, this turned out to be a very positive.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Mast, would you like to come give us your?
Yes, real quickly, I appreciate the, this time, uh, just as you can see there, and I wrote, uh, a policy fifty-two sixty, adult education is really out of date, and so I. and so I've gone about in trying to update it to be more current and address the things we need to. It, uh, we're gonna be going through an adult ed annual review this year, so it'll be very timely to do this, I also have to write a procedures manual outlining our adult ed procedures, so I'm in the process of doing that, so I should hopefully have that done in a month, uh, for that review, but I would ask the board to approve it on a first reading basis only, I have gotten some feedback in one paragraph that deals with our distance learning, I need to clarify some things in the distance learning paragraph of how we track attendance, how we track hours, and what we do for, uh, you know, what students need to be aware of, so. That'll be the only thing I'll change and then sort next month it should be ready for final approval.
Do you just wanna bring this back next month?
Yeah, I, I mean.
I mean, without a first reading appro, can we just?
No, a first reading approval will be awesome, and then I'll just make the brief, a little bit of, uh, correction, and I don't know if that's the process still, but, uh.
Well, we're trying to just, if we agree on the policy, instead of doing a first, second, third, we just approve the entire policy, so it's probably just have it come back.
Okay, yes, and I need to wait one more. I need to bring it back one more day because I did some clarification between the time I posted this and the time I got on the distance learning that I need to do that's
Sure.
required by federal law, so.
Okay, yeah, so just.
I don't know, it's mostly good, so I will bring it back.
So just send it next month. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Alright, Matt, you wanna talk about calendars?
So, we talked about the calendar last spring meeting, and one of the suggestions that came out of the Teachers Association was swapping the fall break date, so these calendars, um, one is the calendar that we looked at last time and the other reflects that change. We did have some other feedback coming in, um, unfortunately, when we, when we look at the parameters that, that we've historically followed, we don't have a lot of flexibility, so I would ask that the school board approve, um, one of these two calendars, uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, it's not too late for discussion on this.
Go ahead.
Um, I polled, I polled my, uh, schoolchildren, um, they're always logging in for longer Christmas break. And one, one of the things that we've noticed is that we take Veterans Day off in the school district, whereas many of the school districts in the state do not. And we got the possibility of, uh, of doing the same and adding one day to the long Christmas break, I throw that out.
What's our reason behind veterans?
Cause we, there is a reason for that.
So. His, historically, um, we've had a big push to have Veterans Day, um, off, celebrate it, observe, um, that has significantly come from um, quite a bit of push from our River Region wanting to have, wanting to have that recognized as off, and it did go through a thorough process, um, I don't know how many boards ago, but maybe probably in the last five years where we just started observing Veterans Day, and, um, that's, that's the history behind it and the, and the reasoning behind it, there was, there was a big push to keep that observed, to make that observed.
So, some additional information, I, I wanna say there were probably four or five years in a row and the group got bigger every year from the River Region asking us and really providing more information about Veterans Day and the feelings of not having school on Veterans Day and observing that as a holiday, um, it was explained that Veterans Day for many, many families is like Christmas, Easter, Fourth of July, that families gather, they have big celebrations and they need that time with their families to appropriately, um, really observe and honor that day, and at, at the time, from what I remember and understand, every school district in the state of Utah, forty-one school districts, do not observe Veterans Day as a holiday. But every school on the Navajo, in the Navajo Nation, except for our schools that are in Utah, do observe Veterans Day. So we have that, and, and then to split it and say, okay, schools on the Navajo Nation or the Ridge, you know, it's too hard to split up and say, we'll observe it on some of our schools and not on our other schools, and that was when that changed, um, because Veterans Day is on the eleventh, right? It, it rotates through the week and so there's a few years where it's observed on a weekend. I always appreciated that they held, you know, the, at San Juan High School specifically, the assembly, but now they just hold it a day before Veterans Day and still teach our students things that, you know, hopefully they're learning at home as well, but, I mean, so anyway, there, there's a little more to what Matt explained, it's why, why we do that now.
That's where that came from.
So, the only other question I have is like, it's like we come back from Christmas and then within a week and a half, well, two weeks, we're back off from Martin Luther. I mean, is that, is there a real push to observe that one and you could, or could you dump that one down in there? No?
I, I mean, these are established, uh, yeah, are, are established holidays that we observe.
Okay. Well, that's fine, I'm just asking.
You know, we've, if, if you've been in the district a long time like I have, and Mary, you might have, you've been on the board a number of years, you probably remember this, but we did break the calendar completely down, one, one committee did, and just tore it apart and started over. And it basically came back down to about four principles that came back and they said, this is what is driving our calendar, and we're still living by those principles. Principles such as there be a break at the end of the quarter so that kids do not take homework home. There were a lot of parents backing when that committee was formed, there was a really hot button at that time, a hot topic of, I am so upset when my kid goes home for Christmas break and then math teacher puts two chapters on, and like, we can have a Christmas break.
And a big project.
Spring break, we can't even do anything because so-and-so, you know, my child, we heard a lot of that, that was one principle playing out really strongly. They wanted to end, they wanted to start very late in August and end at a certain time as well, there was kind of a, a crunch there. Um, a missing one, there's one more major principle that was involved.
And you're talking principles, not in principles of schools.
No, principles that guided our calendar, and it's still driving our calendar, I mean, it still really is.
Principles. Yeah.
If we really wanted to look at this calendar and break it down, I think we really should say for the following year calendar, we wanna organize a committee and assign that to HR or to me or somebody and say, we wanna revisit that because it will literally take, working with SECs and working with parents, it would take a good three or four month process, five month process to get the input that, and we may end up at the very same place. I, I kinda think we might, but anyway, just so you're aware.
We, we did try, not the full level, um, but a couple of years ago, we tried to look at making some, some changes outside of those principles and ended up back where we were.
And another point is that depending on where Christmas and New Year's land and, you know, it's always a week apart, but sometimes we end up with almost a two-week break at Christmas, and then, so teachers often mention it to me too, like, yeah, we have a longer Christmas break, I mean, we all want a longer Christmas break, but as it rotates through, some years we have a longer one, some years we have a shorter one. It's al- also has been noted over the years that there are people who live in San Juan County and are educators, they've, they've come from a long ways away, some of them, and a plane ride away, and right now, nobody's, not nobody, but people aren't traveling. But there's, there's good reason to give enough vacation break a couple of times a year, Christmas time and spring's break to let them, to let people fly home who live on the, you know, families live on the east coast or somewhere else, um, like that, and so to not have dotted, uh, too many dotted holidays all over the place, that was a
Sure. Okay.
Consideration then too, sounds good.
Thank you, Matt, will you do nine through twelve please?
Okay, nine is just a quick snapshot that I have provided you guys, that is, um, about a year and a half, maybe a little more in the, in the making as we start to really dig in and address, um, outdated policy. Uh, a number of those policies have not been updated since I was in high school, and that was a long time ago. So that just gives you a.
Hang on a minute. Go ahead.
That just gives you a snapshot of, of where we're at and, and, and the issues that we're taking, um, the ones highlighted in red are, are policies that we are, I'm hoping to bring before you in the near future, so really, that's just an information item, um, I'm just gonna jump through the next three policies, so fourteen-ten, student teachers and internships, I'm, I'm, I'm recommending that the board repeal this policy in its entirety. Uh, the policy is out of date, it's not necessary. Teacher preparation programs have changed and they're, they're becoming, um, more fluid, it's, it's, it's the state office and the universities, um, adapt to the, to the needs of the, of the industry, um, as a result, we need to be a little more flexible, and where we don't need these things established in policy, there's really no reason to have this policy, so I'm asking that, that you guys go ahead and repeal that. Moving down to the next one, um, legal status, legal status of school district, um, this again is out of date, you don't need a policy to establish these things. The, um, case law that is cited here, uh, is not current and especially with the Eleventh Amendment immunity and things of that nature, it's just in its entirety inaccurate and not needed, so again, um, I'm asking the, the school board to, to repeal that. Questions on either of those two? Okay, on the last one that I have is, um, board education elections, I'm, I'm asking that we delete in its, in its entirety, um, paragraph four, twenty-two twenty, paragraph four, uh, the reason for this mostly is that A, it's not supported in code, and B, it's not clear as a matter of law whether that would take effect or not, um, so, uh, having run that through legal counsel, the recommendation is that we just delete that paragraph, so these are just some systematic cleanup as we start on our adventure together to clean up all of our policies over the next few years.
Okay, I have a question on the very first, would you? Am I reading this wrong, I'm really confused, I'm thinking, primary elections to fill vacancies on the board shall be held on the second Tuesday after the first Monday of November as part of the general election? Primary elections, or is that just saying initial elections, not primary, cause primaries are held in June, not in November, so am I just, is that?
So you don't, I guess.
Doesn't make any sense to me, but.
Yeah, the one, I, I didn't read it that way, but I, I see how you're reading it, um, and that's something that I can look into.
Okay. Isn't like, what?
Okay.
Well, I was questioning why we need this policy at all, it doesn't seem like it's something that's under our jurisdiction on how a school board member is elected, that's state law.
That's true.
And so I don't know if that, if that was brought up with the attorney or not, do we even need a policy about how school board members are elected? Yeah, district policy.
I, I, it, it is definitely outlined in, in statute and code, um, the clarification piece would be, um, when you take office and, and making sure that the oath is administered before office. Again, that is outlined, um, the recommendation from legal counsel was just to remove that piece, um, that we did not discuss in general, didn't go through the entire two-three-two zero.
Thank you. Okay, last item, we move right.
Last item, um.
One question, one question.
Oh, sorry Nelson, go ahead.
Um, Matt, on the policy twenty, twenty-two twenty, on the bottom page, on the, below the reference, uh, will the date be changed on that for, for revision?
The date?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, follow-up, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're moving to the website video.
Number thirteen, I, if, I would love for you, if you would, um, even take out your phone, if you wanted to. Maybe I, maybe I'm going too far here, but I would love, encourage you to download the app, um, we have a new district app. If you have Android, it's on the Google Play, if you have an Apple, it's on Apple App, and it's free, we're gonna have a major.
I just searched in my app, by the way.
I'm researching.
You'd look, you'd just look under probably San Juan School Districts, San Juan School District would probably bring it up, and, um, this is a, this, we, we will have a, our webpage will change, it, it, if you do, if you don't get the app, it'll still look fairly similar to what it's always looked at. It'll be a basic webpage, it'll have all the information, you'll go to it, you'll be able to utilize it like you've utilized this present one. But if you download the app, you will now connect to schools, and they'll be able to send you notifications, news, you'll get, you'll, you'll be so much more connected with your schools than before. This video kinda will walk us through it if it'll play, it'll kinda show it a little bit. So let's watch this video and then we'll, we'll finish this discussion.
Should I get notifications or no?
Hang on a minute, yeah, watch this and I think it'll guide you. Do we get volume, do we get sound?
Do I want notifications on tech person?
Nope, we didn't get sound.
Karen, can I rate please?
Dang it, it's not showing sound, so.
Want me to turn online? Do I want notifications though, yes or no, yes?
Yes, yes. Just shows you where to go, I don't know. So there's probably nothing we can do.
We've got no sound online.
It's a video we're just trying to show.
Yeah, there's somebody.
Notifications.
There you go.
What, what happened?
Introducing the brand-new app for San Juan School District on Android and iPhone. Moving forward with San Juan Schools, anytime, anywhere. This is the home screen, tap the school's icon in the top right or swipe left to select a specific school. Tap the three horizontal lines in the top left or swipe right to see all the menu items. To turn on push notifications, tap Settings and select Turn On Notifications.
Then you can save your school.
The events section shows a list of events throughout the school, you can use this button to add an event to your calendar or tap here to share the event with friends and family. The live feed is where you'll find updates from administration about what's going on throughout the school, whether that's celebrating a student's success or reminding you about an upcoming deadline. Search San Juan School District in the App Store or Play Store to explore the app for yourself. Moving forward with San Juan Schools, anytime, anywhere.
We, we feel strongly that this will put us will be able to, um, send out, you know, notifications about events, about emergencies, snow days would be so much more effective to just be able to send out a notification. We can tie our district Facebook page, our district Twitter, and our live feed at our webpage all together in one announcement, which we've never been able to do before. So we're pretty excited about just having things more, a little bit more advanced for our parents, this is how the majority of people are communicating today, not all of them, but certainly, certainly a, a very large population, so we're excited about that, and you will see a very robust, um, PR campaign start up as, as early as, well, there's signs going up in stores now, I placed a few today, that'll be alerting our parents, we'll probably have some radio, we'll have a letter in the, eh, the paper, some radio ads, and in the schools, they'll be pushing these apps for parents to get the app as well, and we'll move forward. One, one really quality thing about it is actually the program that we are using, Aptigie, to do this, we will spend less money for one program than we were spending for three this year to run our parent link, our, we had a couple other programs, this will actually be a cost savings to the district, or, so that's, that's exciting as well. Anyway, I just, if you had any questions, I wanted the board to be aware and know when this, when they see this in, in multiple places, exactly what, what we are doing, where we're at, what's happening there, not to be in any way not informed.
That's awesome.
So any questions or concerns, comments?
No, anyone? Okay, that's exciting.
Nelson and, and Lucille, any comments on that?
That's cool. I like it.
Awesome.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you.
No comment.
All right, we're going to break until six. Okay. And I'm gonna move out like, cause then we have a nice picture.
Oh.
So the super.
You gotta hold this.
Perfect.
So, and I'm gonna read this, and then we're, I'm
Always again.
Okay. So, Sheila Alvarez has come to the San Juan School District with extensive experience and expertise in the healthcare field. She is enthusiastic and very helpful. Her role requires her to allocate her time across several schools. With, with her wide range of responsibilities, she maintains high levels of support. Most recently, Sheila has been integral in the implementation of bringing telehealth services to the San Juan School District. We probably should mention that at some point. That's very exciting. This is a unique opportunity that will allow our schools to be able to connect with healthcare professionals through virtual visits to support student needs remotely and impressive, and improve access to care and overall health of students in our district. Thank you, Sheila. We appreciate your leadership and all you have brought to the San Juan School District. Nominated by Julie Holt.
I know we're smiling in our mask.
Thank you. Really appreciate all you do, she works.
Thank you.
Oh, you gotta keep that too.
I can tell. I talked to Sheila just a little bit prior to this meeting about that, and so I think what we'll do is just have an update if we can on that telehealth in our next meeting.
Or, yeah, that's all right.
So that it's very interesting, very great.
That's exciting.
Thank you. Okay, and then Amber Hoops.
All right. Um, Amber was nominated by Anonymous. As, uh, so I'll read Anonymous's, uh, comment first. Amber has a gift of connecting with every student that enters her room. She has a passion for teaching math, and including every student, she encourages them to see and reach their potentials. She gives respect and compassionate direction to her students, and will do everything she can to help any student that needs extra support. I greatly appreciate her presence to our youth here at A R L. And also nominated by J.J. Squires. J.J. says this. Uh, Mrs. Hoops is always going the extra mile for her students. She is constantly staying late tutoring the students who need just a little more help in math. She is always asking students how they are and showing that she cares about their well-being. Mrs. Hoops is a great asset to the sixth grade team and is always helping where needed. Congratulations.
Amber, just keep your great face. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have one public comment, so Craig Swenson, would you like to come up?
I was asked by the Teachers' Association, um, representative to come and thank you guys for the um, extra money that we received last month. Um, it's very much appreciated. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, Eva, anymore? Okay. So that concludes our public, oh. I'm trying to, did I?
He wanted, he wanted you to ask him questions.
Oh, okay, let's ask you.
If you ever need to ride home.
Where did you spend it?
Where did I spend it? I put your tires on my truck.
Thanks for coming. All right, uh, so we will move into our consent agenda. All right, so I need a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I move to accept the consent agenda.
About a second?
Second.
Cody, second.
Okay, any discussion?
Um, I, I have, I guess, a question about our, um, homeschool students.
Okay.
Um, and, and I, I always ask this, I, or from time to time, but, um, is there anything we can do or that may happen in the future that will possibly get the, our students back to the, is it COVID-related? Or?
One of them is.
I, I, yeah, I know that, I did visit with the one family, and it is very much COVID-related. And every intention is to come back to our schools when it's done, so I'm hoping that that's a theme for the, we've seen, we've seen, um, I wouldn't say, uh, you know, huge numbers, but we've seen a fair amount of kids, enough that's very concerning, leave our district, so yes, we do hope to bring them back.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Hi?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Right.
Okay. Um, we are going to need to go into closed session, and then we'll come back and go to our action items, so I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss, number one, real property, and number three, personnel. There's nothing for litigation.
Oh, we are gonna go into closed session at home?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Well, yes, and then we better come back out, cause some of these items are possible. Action items.
And then we'll be the last on the purchase exchange. Oh, okay. So, number one, number two, not number three?
Not number two, not number three.
Not number two, okay.
We might oughta do them one at a time. I think, I think technically that is the most appropriate ways to go in for a, a purpose, come out and go back in.
Okay.
I move to go into a closed session, um, for the purpose of discussing, um, purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
So we have a motion, my Mary?
Second.
Second, my C K. I need a roll call. Nelson, you wanna lead on on the roll call?
Uh, Nelson Elamand, yes. With Phil Cody, yes.
Lori Mon, yes.
Mary Schimway, yes.
Steve Black, yes.
Okay.